This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to our April 4 meeting. City of Escalon, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rule call, please.
Councilmember Hagan?
Here.
Councilmember Bellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Crummick?
Councilmember Crummick is absent, an excuse, he's on a military assignment this weekend.
Mayor Pro Tem Swift?
Here.
And Merrills?
Here. Okay, it looks like we're gonna jump down to the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and act upon by a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. Approval of, well, do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mayor Alz, regarding item number two, I'll be abstaining on check number nine, eight, four, eight.
Okay, do we have a motion for the balance?
Motion for the balance?
We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Currys, Porro, one, what do you want, abstention, not abstention, just?
No, absent.
Just absent, everything. Okay, one absent, here we go. Staff communications, wastewater treatment plant, report for February, please, thank you.
Thank you, this was a staff communication that did not make it on our agenda for the last meeting, and so this is the update on the wastewater treatment plant for the month of February, so if you have any questions, let us know.
Anybody have any questions for the staff? None? How about in our audience, is there anyone who'd like to speak on this matter? Okay, haven't seen no one come to the podium, is there anybody online that would like to speak about this matter? All right, there's no one, no one's interested, so we'll be moving on to the next two items. And the next two items, I'm requesting that we-
Hold on, you have matters presented from the audience?
Oh, that's right, sorry. Glad I didn't like to move right through there. The public may, yeah, matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is not, that is on the agenda at the time that the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda, that is, within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to maximum five minutes, user, unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. The determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is a discretionary decision made by the mayor. All right, is there anyone out there that'd like to come to the podium this evening? You're more than welcome to, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Council, Kirk Danziger. Last city council meeting, we passed a process to appoint any absent vacancies on the council, and I believe that now's the time to apply that to all open positions, whether they be mosquitoes, planning commissioners, the process should be the same. If there's an opening, there's an appointment, and all questioning for any of the candidates should come from the council. The last go around, I was gonna ask Dave Bellinger, what questions do you remember asking any of the applicants for planning commissioner?
Off the top of my head, I'd have to go back to my notes, but talked about what experience they had, I asked about growth, that's about all I could come off the top of my head, but I had probably half dozen questions.
So you questioned all of the commissioners that way?
The two that I interviewed, I asked the same questions.
Okay, 'cause I talked to the other commissioners, they don't remember anybody interviewing them this, in June, so that would be Barbara Willis, Steve Costiano, and myself, and so I wanted to point that out, that didn't take place, your memory may be different, but there wasn't any interviews. And so, two things, one, I think it needs to be more transparent, we need to use the process that was approved this last go around for city council members, and use it for planning commissioners too. This, and I'll leave it at that. Did you say you were taking the other two items off the-
I did. I have to get consent from the council members, but-
No, no, I understand, which two items were they?
Five, six, I gotta sit here. It's item four and five.
Item four and five, so it's the last ones?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Anyone, okay, Mr. Strowman.
Evening, Council, I'm just, if item number four is pulled, I just would like to make just a quick comment. I think it's, there's some confusion on this particular item, whether or not it's confidential or anonymous, because if you look it up, there are two inherent differences between confidential and anonymous. Anonymous is no names are given, et cetera, et cetera, and we learned the last council meeting that if something is reported anonymously, nothing is done with it. But to Councilman Swift's comments from the last meeting, I think it's important to designate on the form, do you wish this to remain confidential? Because I think the process for code enforcement can follow, continue if it's confidential, so, I mean, we keep talking about this as anonymous, but I think the real gist is confidential, so, just wanted to make a comment on that, thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody on the internet or on phones like to chime in on this item, or any item?
Yes. Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. This is Elsa Sandoval, car troubles, sorry. I was looking into, out of personal curiosity, on the anonymous versus confidential, and spoke to people, different cities on both sides of who has and who hasn't, does, has it. One of the issues, of course, they keep talking about as to why they remove the anonymous is the waste of city resources, of course, that's time and money, as to who has to look at this, the weaponizing of code enforcement from neighbor disputes, someone even brought up divorces, you know, of course, child custody, people can get nasty. It's also, can be abused for personal vendettas, for whatever reason, neighbor, city, whoever might be doing that, and malicious, what they called malicious targets, which is, that comes down to politics, race, religion, you know, sexual orientation, these kind of things apparently still go on. They have switched to confidential reporting, which is you have to give your personal information, and one of the biggest thing on confidential reporting is the requirement to be a resident. I mean, I kinda thought of it as a given, but apparently not. You can still have the issue of a workplace situation, and they don't even live in town, but they wanna harass someone. The thing with confidential reporting is also, if it's a simple code violation, like a building code, okay, that doesn't necessarily involve a whole lot from the person other than who calls it in. If it's more of a noise complaint, or something that goes into a court process, then the person who is confidentially reporting does end up having to possibly come into a court situation, and they need to be aware of that. All of them have, the ones who have removed the anonymous have replaced it with a confidential reporting and a resident requirement. So I just thought that was interesting. All of them did say that they cut their anonymous calls and their, what they considered their waste of their time and money by over 50%, the ones that removed it. The ones that have not have found different ways to deal with it, so anonymous call becomes a, they're the least prioritized, they're stuck at the bottom of a pile, and some of them even wait till they have at least 10 complaints on the same address before they even act on it. So, it's just interesting to see, see how people are handling this situation. That's it.
Thank you for looking into that, and thank you for your, I appreciate that very much.
Didn't realize we were gonna talk about it, I thought it was taken-
We're not, and you know what?
All right, so all I wanna say about that last call, and I don't even know, I couldn't follow most of it, is, just a question to staff, how many frivolous, anonymous, confidential people have called in about a neighbor or any aspect of the city in last year?
Frivolous being-
You mean anonymous?
Things that you looked at, and they weren't, they weren't proven to be true, and you, and it was a waste of your time?
Everything, to my knowledge, that's been submitted, when investigated, is confirmed to be in some type of violation.
That's what I thought, so, we don't, we're looking for a solution to a problem we don't have, and you can keep doing it, but as far as I'm concerned, you should just leave it alone, or hire a code enforcement person. I mean, if that's such a big issue to you, hire somebody, and tie them in with the police department there, and they'll have all the respect that they deserve, so, as long as it's not on the agenda.
All right, is there anyone else like to speak? Okay, nobody on the phones again? Move back to council, gentlemen, you have any comments? Want to add to anything?
Not the mayor's presented for the audience, we're allowed.
I'm not suggesting you give speeches, if you wanted to throw anything in there, you could, but since you don't, we'll move back, we'll move on to item number four and item number five. It's my recommendation-
I didn't want to interrupt you, but before you move forward, I had some staff communications-
Go right ahead. I'm sorry to miss that.
No, no problem. I just wanted to remind everybody that we have a senior housing workshop scheduled for next Monday-
Monday, six o'clock?
April 11th, 6:00 PM, here at City Hall.
Very good, all right.
And so, I have reached out to all of the developers that we were in contact with in some way, shape, or form regarding senior housing, and gave them that information, so that they're aware. I've also followed up with Ann Shaddix with the Senior Fund Bunch, and just reminded them about the date to make sure that everybody knows that that's the workshop, and so we'll be putting some information together for that presentation. And municipal services review, that's a document we've been working on for several months, it is completed and in draft form, we are fine tuning it, and then it will be submitted over to LAFCO for a first review, just to make sure that the document itself is in line with everything that's going on in the city, and not far off from what they're looking for, and then as soon as they give us that rough complete, we'll be bringing it to both planning commission and council for a workshop and review and approval.
Perfect. Did you have an opportunity to reach out to Mr. DeBlonge?
I have not, but I do have his information.
Okay, just, why don't you, oh, I can announce it.
Okay.
If there's anyone interested in Escalon, working on a food, what is it, distribution?
It's like a food bank distribution committee-
They need someone from Escalon, so if anyone's interested, there's an open spot for that. I was thinking maybe Ann might be interested in it, we could ask her.
Okay, I will follow up with Mr. DeBroom and confirm what it's for, and that way I know who to contact.
Good enough, good enough.
Dominique?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Of course.
Did, was Claire, she was gonna have the understanding of the finances on that 900,000 at that meeting?
Yes, that will be there.
She will?
Yes, yeah, all of that information on the, in lieu, in the, in lieu monies that we have for housing, she'll have that available at the meeting, and then I'll also provide a, you know, the, the previous RFQ, which was presented at the last meeting, as well as the items that the Senior Fund Bunch had put together for senior housing, that way we can review and/or approve.
Well, we also have like a checklist of basically exactly what these developers are gonna need to be able to put pen, pencil to paper on this, so that we can make these decisions, 'cause I think that's why we decided to go and have the workshop versus trying to decide these things, I think, like at 9:30 or 10:30 at the last meeting.
Yes, yeah, and those were the maximum on the acreage, and then the maximum on the amount of development impact fees that we would consider waiving.
Right.
So basically, land and money incentives.
Okay.
Does that also include like that, the idea of hybridizing things? That conversation came up a little bit too, like fair market, inattainable, and, and low income, excuse me, that strategy that was mentioned before?
Yeah, and that was, that was a strategy that we were working on with the group, that has also been invited, a developer that's been invited to the, to the workshop as well, that, that might be something that we talk about more generally, to be, and then maybe what, if we get people that are submitting to the RFP, we can fine tune it as we're moving forward, but generally speaking, we'll talk about those breakdowns and review that with everybody that's at the workshop.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
All righty, so now we're gonna move to-
I've, I've got a few things also-
Okay, go ahead.
For staff communication, just wanna update everybody on the Hogan bathroom, 'cause everybody sees this big beautiful building there, it's closed still. We're in the process, we're having to install a transformer to upgrade our electricity, and that actually goes inside the bathroom, so that's kinda what's holding it off here, because we needed more power, so we have transformer, which we knew. Sidewalks, the contractor had a little bit of staffing issue with his staff, but he's hoping to get started this week, so hopefully here, within the next two weeks, we'll have our sidewalks installed, and electricity on the bathroom.
Why, what is it in there that would require more electricity than the previous bathroom?
In the previous bathroom, we ran three lights. Here, we have a matter of seven lights, two blowers, couple water heaters.
Oh, water heaters.
We have water heaters in there, we have some automatic locking systems, it's just a lot more power that's needed.
Sounds like it.
Which is good, we, I mean, we just, and I just want everything-
Well, it's a lot more modern.
It is, and I want everything to be up to par and safe before we even open the door, so it sits there for good.
What is the hours on that, when it's open?
Generally, I think it's seven in the morning till 11 at night, I'd have to look, I think it's seven to 11.
How many days a week?
Seven days a week.
There's no showers in them, correct?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Also, just wanna bring the council's attention, the two orchards we own, they're starting to get a little out of hand as far as overgrown, so I just want us all to kinda be mindful, maybe in the next two weeks, kinda think of a little solution, we can get in there to get them halfway taken care of, maintained, where they're not a fire hazard. We've got a few neighbors that live next to them that we don't wanna impede on. Also, just keep in mind, we have Love Escalon, I think it's April 30th, right, Mr. Swift?
Yeah, yeah.
They're doing a lot of volunteer work for the city, so if any of you council members can think of anything that would be helpful for the city, please reach out to me in the next week or so, we'll add it to their list. I think that's it for me.
And then I just wanted to jump on the, the Love Escalon, the group wanted to put together bingo for the seniors, and wanted to have it at the community center, but our community center is booked that entire day, so we have booked them over at the library room, the old council chamber-
Yeah, good idea.
For bingo between 9:00 and 12:00, so we did get that situated.
Perfect, good idea. Also, in regards to the orchard, where I have a couple contract proposals that I've been reviewing, they're not really done yet, from Matt Caton.
Okay.
And I was discussing those today with Dominique over the phone, but I wanted to discuss with him one more time to make sure I understand what he's putting down on paper.
Sure.
So then I'll bring them to the council review, and you can have a copy if you like, and everyone else, but it'll be at the next meeting probably, or somewhere around there, but we're on top, and we're just, hey, it's hard to get people to get that on.
It is, it is.
It's a bear. Okay, anyway, now, can we move forward? Did I forget anything?
No, that's-
We're good?
We're good, thank you.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to items four and five, and I'm suggesting that we put these off till the full council's here to discuss both of these items.
Yeah, I don't know, personally, am I, I'm prepared to be able to discuss and make a decision on both of them tonight.
I would agree with that, we're here.
Well, I disagree. What about you?
I mean, I'm indifferent to it, so, I mean, I don't wanna do- What is, and what's the reasoning?
Because I want the full council here, I think both of these require full council confirmation.
So what about item four, gives you some trepidation about not having the full council here?
Because the full council should be here to deal with it, because it's something that we need to have the full vote, we had the full vote last time, you recall, right? We ended up in a deadlock.
Right, right, right. I think, I think my only concern is that if we, if this sets a precedent, you know, let's say if we have future councils, whether you have a member gone or not, theoretically, I mean, and that's, and that's not a bad thought, Mayor Alz, but, to me, I would think that would set the precedent that, listen, if we don't have a full council, then we probably shouldn't be having discussion items, or administrative matter items, public hearings, or anything like that, and I think that might start slowing down the process quite a bit.
Well, I disagree, I think it's critical that we have four members, that's my stand on it.
So.
At four? I mean, a full-
If I might, on item four, the only issue is whether the council would like to tell staff not to enforce any-
You're gonna end up, yeah, what we did last time, do a two to two, that's where we were last time, that's where we'll be again tonight.
No, I think the, the issue has been clarified quite a bit, if you read my staff report, the only issue really before you is whether you wanna, you wanna go ahead and investigate complaints that come in with no name on them, or not, 'cause currently you do investigate complaints, at least, the last time I talked to you, I thought, even if somebody doesn't provide their name and address-
Yes.
Staff still-
These names, the names are attainable through a court order, by the way.
Right.
Okay.
I said that in my staff report.
Yeah, I saw it. I want everybody else to hear it.
Yeah. So, I mean, so, on the form, it asks for the name and address, and it, there are many, you know, there are good reasons to require that, so that staff, if they need to follow up with that person to get more information, or if they need to go back and report to that person what steps have been taken, that would be useful. So if you wanted to, you could direct staff to not, not even, not accept complaints unless that information is completed.
Right, well, that was my proposal at the last meeting, and I'm gonna stay with my proposal again, in that, on the code enforcement page on our city website, we merely insert the language, "We do not investigate anonymous complaints." Everything else there ties a viewer and looks, and makes it very clear to the viewer that they do need to fill out the actual form, if they'd like to make a complaint. So again, my only addition that I would suggest is, again, the verbiage that says, "We do not accept anonymous complaints."
Right.
And that's it?
That's, that's it, that's really, that's-
That's it, that's the rawest proposed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the issue of whether that, if somebody does give their name and address, it does have to be kept confidential, unless there's a court order.
What would drive the court order? If the person who was code enforced, can they get a court order to get that name? Would that be allowed?
It depends, it depends, it's at the judge's discretion, it depends on what the litigation-
If it's necessary.
Is about, yeah.
Where's, what's, so, in that whole process, excuse me, when, say, someone calls in, it's not anonymous, they give the private information, it's confidential, right?
Name and address?
Name and address, yeah.
They do give their name and address, yes.
Correct. That goes to staff, is there any oversight on that process internally?
Just staff?
Just staff?
No oversight by council.
No, no, like, is it just one individual?
Well, whoever your code enforcement officer is, no, I mean, it can, depends on what it is, but the police can be involved, it depends on what the nuisance, or alleged nuisance is, that county health officer possibly could be brought in, it just depends on what it is.
I mean, it makes sense to have, obviously, not anonymous, but have a private, confidential privacy that's there. The only concern I see is not something we have currently, excuse me, but would be like a, if you're looking at something long-term, what if you had an individual in that situation, that position, that was calling stuff confidential and was abusing that position? That's my concern. Would be a concern I have, is, in other words, an auditing process that's there, that exists?
Well, that would be the city manager's purview, the city manager is in charge of all employees.
Okay, so-
So currently, our process, you can file a complaint online through our online reporting system, or we have forms you can fill out upfront, we also accept the phone calls as well, if they're unable to come in, and so, all of that stuff gets documented, and then depending on-
At that point? And it gets put into our maintenance care, it goes into a computer system?
Correct, if it's something that we can have public works work on, public works related, we put it into our maintenance care system, for them to take care of, like a, a streetlight being out, pictures needing to be taken, taken of weed, weed abatement, those type of things, or a sidewalk discrepancy, we assign it to public works, if it's something that's animal control related, or we think the police department would be the better person to follow up on, then we forward that complaint over to the police department, and under Chief Lackey.
So say hypothetically, say hypothetically, you had a individual who felt like they were being targeted in some way, is there an auditing process for that?
We have an appeals, so, so anytime you're sent a letter for a code violation, if you're sent a letter for a code violation, and you've been found to be in violation of the municipal code, we provide you options, but then in that letter, we also provide that you have a right to appeal, and if you file for your right to appeal within that time period, which is 10 to 15 days, it just depends on what it falls on, you could submit a request for an appeal, and then what the city does is we find a hearings officer to listen to the appeal.
What's the appeal cost?
And all of those issues, then the person could, you know, tell the hearing officer that he or she feels like he's being targeted, you know, any information at all that person wants to provide to the hearing officer?
Now, is that hearing officer, is that like a, an individual citizen, or who is that?
It's an independent code enforcement officer, appoint, is, does the council appoint that, or do you?
The hearings officer can be, can be selected, in the past, in the past, we've used-
The Turlock city attorney, I know-
We've used a Turlock city attorney.
Was willing to do that at some, and-
I just wanna make sure there's some oversight for the citizens on some level.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's the only concern I see, I'm seeing that's like a bone to hurt.
And then if they're, if they're not happy with the appeals officer, they can file to a code, a board of code appeals, which is a higher level, so they would appeal the hearing officer, go to the board of appeals, and the board of appeals, in accordance with the municipal code, is two planning commissioners and one other person selected by the city manager, and then they are considered the board, and they would hear on the, on the code board of appeals. There's two different options there.
And then also, on like, the financial aspect of that, what are we looking at cost-wise for that?
I don't believe through code enforcement, nuisance abatement, I can't remember if we have a fee for that one, there's one of them where we don't have a fee established for it, I'd have to find out, I can look that up.
It's a resolution, isn't it?
Yeah, it would be, it should be in our fee schedule, I'd have to pull that up.
$150 or something?
I'm not sure. We used to not have a fee for it, but we incorporated one maybe three years ago, because we were getting a lot of them, and usually the fee is established, because if you don't have a fee attached to it, everybody files for an appeal, and then you're constantly hiring, you know, and you're, you're constantly having somebody either volunteer to do that work, or if you're using, like a past consultant, like in the past, we've used an old city manager that was on a consulting firm, we'd have to, we had to pay him for the service, and so, if they do win the appeal, the, the fee is refunded back to them, so you have it set up that way.
Are we talking like, like an astronomical amount of money, are we talking like 50 bucks, or hundreds, thousands, or?
We have a fee attached to a citation, if they're cited, I believe the fee is 250, it's gotta be 2 or 250, 200 or 250 dollars.
Yeah, and they submit that amount, and then if they appeal and win, they get that back.
And the appeal process is a process by which the city deemed the offense to be outside of our building code and a violation, and the person who's appealing is saying, "No, according to why I read the code, it is within spec," is that the only-
Right.
-approach that can happen with that appeal process?
Yeah, it's just a question of whether the, the alleged violation is or is not a violation.
So the, both the code board of appeals and the hearing officer are supposed to follow the language in the municipal code, which simply states, if it's in violation, then they, they don't get the appeal. If you can confirm that it is a violation, then, then they don't, they, they, their appeal is denied.
Okay.
So, so essentially, if they file for an appeal, and they are in violation, it there, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything, the appeals officer isn't supposed to approve their appeal if they are in violation, they're supposed to not approve the appeal.
And is it currently, like, Elsa had mentioned that on, on YouTube, or over the internet, sorry, send YouTube, as far as being a resident and of that kinda stuff, like, is that in the language at all?
You have to be a resident to complain?
Yeah, correct.
No, that's not currently part of our, but you could direct that to-
Is that a legal thing we can do, that you have to be a resident of the city?
Yes, you could.
Not an employee anywhere in town, but you have to be a resident?
You could.
Or you could say resident and/or employee?
Yeah, yeah, you, 'cause you have discretionary enforcement, you know, yes, you could, you could require that the information has to be given, in terms of who they are, and that they have to be a resident, if you would like to do that.
Yeah, Councilmember Hagan, and that's part of the reason why I felt comfortable, you know, after all the discussions we've had, and what Elsa said, and about knowing that there's a process, you know, about what I'm proposing, and if you'd like to add in a language also that says that you do need to be a resident of the city of Escalon, then that's fine.
Yeah, 'cause I think it makes sense to have, there, if we have an oversight process, there's an auditing process, so if an individual feels like they're being targeted, you know, not that it happens every day or something, but in theory, if it ever did happen, then there's that avenue to pursue it, then at the same time, like you're saying, getting rid of the anonymous and making it, where it is private and confidential, that makes sense to me, but if we can add in that language, I think it makes sense to do that, I don't know, that's my thought at least.
I don't know, that's my thought, at least.
Mm-hmm. And what do, what do you think, Dave?
Well, I, I know that there's been discussion of anonymous, confidential, or you have to put it on there, and the person who's being code enforced, shall we say, knows who their accuser are, I think those are the three different points that we have here on this board. I truly believe that anonymous does not work, I believe that we have to be confidential, there's no reason for anybody to know who enforced them, it's a, it's a function of who, whose property has a violation or not, doesn't matter who turned you in, if you will, it's irrelevant to the situation, either the structure or the, whatever it may, the violation, you put a boulder on the sidewalk, or whatever it may be, is either within the code or not within the code, so, there's no reason for anybody here to know any of the conversations going on in the background, who violated, you know, and wrote up somebody or not, it's not our business, in my opinion. I did a little research since our last meeting, I have yet to find anywhere in the local area here where citizens' names are released to the person who's being complained and targeted, if you will, as we're saying here. It's all not anonymous and confidential that I've seen so far, that I've been able to find. I haven't hit every town out there by any stretch, but in your research, I don't know what you guys were tasked with, I can't remember, but have you guys done any research on that? Have you found any towns where we act, in the state where the person who's being written up for a possible code violation is allowed to know who their accuser is, if you will?
So, we provided a, a survey that we put out to all the cities in California that are registered with the ListServe, which is through the League of California Cities, and that question was the very, last question, I believe, under, are you aware of a legal way to release complainant contact information? And most of them either said no or yes by court order.
Yeah, it's attached to your staff report, that survey, and as I, if you read my, my staff report, the answer to the question, do you, let's see, the first question is, "Do you require complainants to provide their name and contact information?" Some cities do and some don't, okay? Second question is, do, if you, if you do require the information, if you, if that information is provided, do you keep this information confidential? And that was yes, across the board, every city, and so, and many of them, in the comments, cited the same case that we cite, you know, that's just, all of them keep it confidential, unless there's a court order or subpoena, in which case, you know, you're required to give it up.
Mayor, I know you didn't wanna talk about today, but what are your thoughts?
Go ahead, I have nothing to say, I told you, I don't wanna deal with it until full here, if you guys wanna do it, you're on your own, I'll vote, we'll have a vote if that's what you wanna do, and we'll move forward.
Well, I guess the, the question is, and the comment I'm gonna make to tag on to that, is, we don't have any cities known currently in the state of California that allow that to happen. Our citizens have spoken multiple times now over several meetings, I haven't heard anybody speak to the point that Councilman Krumic and Mayor Alves want, where they know who the accusers are, so, I'm trying to figure out why we're even dealing with this at this point. Everything states, points to, we don't do anonymous, we keep it confidential, maybe or maybe not, we can decide if we wanna add, you have to be a resident of the city and leave it at that, I don't see why we're still pushing to go to the next level, so that they know their accuser, when everything that we're hearing is contrary to that, so I don't understand why we need to move this item along anywhere else, I don't understand that.
Yeah, actually, yeah, at this point, I am prepared to make a motion that, with the code enforcement page on our city of Escalon website, that we do insert language stating that we do not investigate anonymous complaints, and that also language to the fact that you must be a citizen within the city of Escalon.
Yeah, 'cause I think there is a, there is a process, it sounds like, to get that to, if you truly feel like you've been slighted-
Mm-hmm, there is.
-there's a process that goes through the court systems, that's there, so, I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, so that's my motion.
I will second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, opposed? Marry's three to one.
Three to one.
Okay, next item. I don't wanna do them neither, but if you guys wanna push it, go for it.
They're public.
Ah, public, okay, let's have the public. Anybody out there in the public who'd like to give us their information, come up and please give it to us.
Just a small matter, I love to stir things up, Dave Willis, four two five, so ten away, to be a resident to make a complaint, what if you own a business and you have a problem and you live out of town?
It's a valid point.
And somebody's, I just wanted to know, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone on the internet, any phones? Okay.
And if you wanna reconsider that particular issue, you're free to do it.
I have no problem with reconsidering that, I don't know if I'll see anything, who's seconded, did you, or David, yeah, if you re, uh, seconded, yeah, in terms of revisiting it, so that we can either include, you know, the nine five three two zero area code, I think that largely, because you do have to give your address-
Mm-hmm.
-I think that's gonna be giving somebody a sense of validity right there, you know, either you have a business address, or you have a personal address, that's gonna be within the city limits.
Right.
I think it's usually, should be the, the dead giveaway, but that's a very good point that Dave made, though.
Is there any way we can add that into it?
Yes, and if, in the next item, if we were to have it tonight, there's all that information about how to, how to, you could reconsider the matter, if you've already voted on it, you can reconsider it, somebody could make a new motion on the same matter, it just has to be somebody who voted in the affirmative.
Right, and I wanna backtrack one step further, because part of the reason, wanna make that motion, and to get it seconded, was to have a discussion of a motion on the table, and at that point, you know, you wanna get the audience in, involved in it also-
Right.
-so that they, you know, we hear that, their opinion on the item on the table.
Yeah, it should, there should be a, a motion and a second.
And then-
At that point, the motion is considered on the floor, and at that point, it's, it's best to, you know, ask for a comment, both from the council and the public, yep.
Is that-
So, if-
So, at this point, can we reconsider the previous motion, to where we can include, you have to have an address within the nine five three two zero, is that what we're looking at, Mr. Swift?
Well, I would, I would like to have you must be a citizen or a business owner within the city of Escalon, or within the nine five three two zero, add zip code. If that suits everybody's fancy, then I'll, I'll take that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, okay?
I'll second that, yeah.
Right. Courtney, are you doing the notes?
Yes.
Hope you got that one, hope you got that one.
It's okay, the way it's going right now, just let it go, or do you wanna have another vote, or?
Well, okay, so-
We rightfully should vote again.
Properly, you should have-
We rightfully should vote again.
No, first, motion to reconsider-
You wanna amend your motion?
No, it wouldn't even be an am, well, sorry, 'cause it's already been passed.
Right.
So, first, you should probably say, you know, move to reconsider item four, and have a vote on that.
Move to reconsider, reconsider item four.
I will second that, move to reconsider item four.
And then a vote on that?
Yes, vote on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then now, you, well, any of the three of you who voted yes on, on that last can make a new-
Motion.
Right.
Including what Dave brought up.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll do it again, okay? I move that we insert language into the code enforcement page on the city of Escalon website, that we do not investigate anonymous complaints, and also language to the fact that you must be a citizen or business owner within the city of Escalon, or nine five three two zero zip code.
Give me a motion?
Oh, seconded, huh?
Second, all those in favor?
Uh, wait-
We'll have a discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion, come on up.
You guys are going in the right direction. Councilman Swift, I'd, I'd like you to reconsider that nine five three two oh, 'cause that brings people from out of town, even though it's the same zip code, and, and then you get the cruisers looking for something to do, and then the-
Within the nine five three two oh?
No, I'd say just the-
Within the city limits?
Within the city limits.
Yeah, otherwise, you're expanding it too far, in my opinion, and as far as the confidential versus the anonymous, the only reason you'd wanna name is to go out and harass somebody, intimidate them into dropping what they said, and I hate to be in that neighborhood, but you're good, I'm, I'm happy you went with confidential.
What do you do with the people that own property outside of town, that own property in town? Riddles?
Then that'd be their address.
Well, you're letting business people come here that can make that complaint, what's the difference between a business owner and a resident who lives out of town that owns property in town?
If he owns property in town, it's, it's a business.
Okay, that's what I wanna clear up.
Yeah, well, my only thought is, or, or it could be a resident as well, I mean, I know of people who live out, you know, in the area around Escalon, they do have rentals in town, and so, that's the only reason I'm a little hesitant, you know, I wanna have some tie to the town.
What's the difference between a resident, a renter, having a rental property, which is a business, and a business owner that has a business, what's the difference?
There's really none.
That's right.
So, you can just do the business.
So, if you own property in town, basically, period, or a business, then you should be entitled to do the same thing.
Or if you live.
If you live in town, yeah, I don't wanna cut out every renter in town.
You're saying, assuming it's affecting your business, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's logical, I'm okay.
This is a great reason why we need a code enforcement officer, you don't have to deal with all this stuff. Uh, next question is for Justin over here, Justin, if you see a violation of the municipal code, do you guys act on it?
It depends.
It depends on what?
Well, I bring it to the attention, yes, and it's, I'm more or less of a safety factor is where I look at, I'm not out looking for dirty yards, dirty lawns, stuff like that, if it gets brought to our attention, if it's something that's really bad, of course, it would get brought to the attention, but I just don't have the time to look for the things, I'm more or less out looking for safety issues when I'm out looking.
So, so, probably need somebody part-time or, or full-time. A suggestion would be, right now, we have a contract building official, I don't know what we pay him, but if we hired a building official that had all the responsibilities that that person has, and make him, you know, slash code enforcement, that may solve a lot of our problems. One, we'd still, we'd get our plan checks done, you know, on time, not wait for somebody to show up, you know, whatever day of the week, and they can go out and find these things, and handle complaints as well. I, I think you wanna get it as far away from the citizens as you possibly can, I think they get targeted, I think a lot of people probably would have complained if they didn't have the fear in them, you know, of whatever the neighbor may be, you see it all the time, neighbors shooting neighbors over nothing, so, I agree, you know, you keep it confidential, that's about the least we can do on this thing here, and as far as limited to the city, I don't have a problem with that, but I'd still like to get a code enforcement person in here, get them budgeted, have them do a couple of other things that we contract out for right now, and, and so, the, the burden isn't so much on, on the budget, so, that'd be my suggestion.
Anyone else? Any of you on the phones, internet? Okay, we'll bring it back.
So, Mr. Swift, would you like to amend your motion?
I'd like to stay where I'm at.
So, it's been seconded?
So, we did not, or did we include the property owners as rental business owners too, is that included?
We're keeping the nine five three two zero zip code.
So, they're good, they're covered.
And what if you're out of the nine five-
And somebody who owns a business.
A business. What if you're out of the area and own income property, is that considered a business?
Yes.
So, they have the same rights then?
Yes.
I just wanna clear it up, so we know what you guys are gonna do. All right, so, we have a motion.
Are you aware of how far nine five three two oh goes?
Far, uh, Farmington, right?
Riverbank, all the way up to Farmington?
Mm-hmm.
Jackton Road, Stockton area?
But they have to own property in the city.
The motion, they lose anybody in nine five-
With, if they own property-
Right, goes all the way up to Farmington, all the way to Jackton County line.
So, so, say, say it again, 'cause it, residents and business, and business owners within nine five three two zero, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So, so they would have to be, own a business in the city limits of-
No, not-
You must be a citizen or own a business within the city of Escalon. How about that? How about that? You must be a citizen or own a business within the city of Escalon.
Resident, a resident.
Yeah, yeah, resident, resident-
Or a business.
Or own a business within the city of Escalon.
Covers anybody in there who's got a stake.
Then we take out the nine five three two, whatever, but how's that?
Yeah, I think that sounds better, the language sounds better.
That's fine, that's fine.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, second. Now, do we go back to discussion, or are we done with that?
Uh, I'd ask for discussion.
Discussion. Okay, no discussion, how about on the internet? How about phones? Nothing? Okay, so, we're gonna bring it back for a vote, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, opposed? Scary's three to one, okay. All right, let's go on to the next item here, if you guys wanna do it, let's do them.
I would, I would say we hold off on that item. Personally, I think it involves everyone that's here, or would involve us as well as Peter.
It should involve all of us, like the last one, too, but anyway, all right, so, do we have a vote to keep it for next meeting? We have a motion?
Yeah, question, why was this brought up in the first place? Because we, we do use parliamentary procedure, we do use, we're just talking about Rosenberg's Rules of Order versus Roberts' Rules of Order, which I think Rosenberg's is more-
Well, it was brought up for Councilman Swift, it's because we have outbursts, and we have uncontrolled conversations in time, and I'd like to rein them in, and in doing so, that we'd like to have where they address the chair for permission to speak, because it's gotten, I like a lax show, but the problem is, it's gotten a little crazy, I'm just trying to rein it in.
Fair enough, good idea, question, it's a legal council, you could do that under both of these parliamentary systems, is there a legal advantage to go with one or the other, or either?
Well, Rosenberg's is really not substantively different, it's just targeted towards public agencies, so it's simpler, clearer, less confusion, so in that respect-
Roberts' rules are pretty complex.
It's better, Rosenberg's is great.
Right.
And, and, and it does say, like, part of the training is, any, any speaker should be first recognized by the mayor or the chair, you know, you, you see other council members saying, "If I may, mayor, if I may," that's how, you know, or, you know, "I'd like to speak," and they look to the mayor, and the mayor should, you know-
They have to be recognized, where it works in the county, yeah, the county recognizes the chair, chair recognizes those who ask-
So, that should be done.
Which, and the other thing, it reins in that unruliness of a meeting, it just gets crazy after a while.
Right.
Here's my thought, because the chair already has that power, okay?
Yeah.
And so, whether we adopt Rosenberg's, or Roberts', or anybody's Rules of Order, versus using it as a matter of fact, like we've been since about nineteen fifty-seven, you know, um, how relevant is it to adopt formally any system?
It's not, it's not necessary.
I mean, he has a power already.
Right, he does, and the, the only, the purpose of this is really to try, you know, to give some training, especially to the new members, as to how meetings are run, and there are some useful things that, that Mr. Hagan and Mr. Krumic probably don't know, that, you know, like bringing up a point of order, for example, like, I, I understand that recently, the meeting went long, and the mayor said, before council comments, you know, "I'm gonna adjourn the meeting," and if a council member had comments they wanted to make, he could say, "Point of order," you know, "I, I'd like to, I, I don't wanna adjourn now," and then the mayor could decide whether to go on with the meeting, or the mayor could leave, and the vice mayor could take over and finish the meeting, but that would be a perfect, like, point of order, uh, situation.
Yeah.
And there, you know, there, it was just to, just to give some training. And there, you know, there, it was just to, just to give some training.
Yeah, I mean, don't get me wrong, I mean, I think this is something we ought to all read. Just try reading through this. There's a lot.
There's a lot in there.
But yeah, I think this is actually is a really good resource. I would just as soon let this, just go with this. Thank you very much, we got it, and then we move on with life.
I think, I'm, personally, I think it would be best, my, my opinion would be that it's best for Peter to be present during this whole conversation. He's, you know, one, sorry, like myself, one of the, the younger ones in the process of it, understanding the whole process of it.
Right.
So having him present here to go through that process, I think, would be important for him as well.
Well, you're not signaling any one person out that way. That way, everybody gets it the same time, there's no pointing a finger at anybody and everybody gets the same message at the same time. That was the whole reason for everybody being here.
So do you still want to go through this or?
I don't want to do it tonight.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, because either, this is, to me, is one of those things where either we go through it and there's a test afterwards. Or we make sure that all five of us have it.
Well, how about this? How about I explain in the next meeting what I'm going to require from now on? How's that?
Well, as long as it's.
Within the rules.
Yeah. So, yeah, if there are just a few things that you want to clarify.
Well, and to clarify is I want order. I'm tired of people spouting out and making a lot of controversy, controversy, you know, want it under order. I just want people to take the time to be recognized, to speak, and then let it go. No personal attacks anymore, I'm done with that too.
Right, so, yeah.
Enough is enough.
Yeah, one, one of the things is, you know, if, if anyone is, you know, making comments that are too personal or too rude or too loud, the mayor can call that person out of order.
We've done that.
So I think that, I mean, it's more than fair, I think if Mayor Alves, my suggestion is more than fair, if you want to go and, you know, make that suggestion at the beginning of the meeting, by the way. You know, all of you have a copy of these rules, they're there for a reason. We'd like to strict them, you know, stay with them and follow them strictly and including the rules of, especially decorum.
Yeah, and you could even point out, it's on the last page, courtesy and decorum. Well, it is always best for only one person at a time to have the floor. And it is always best for every speaker to be first recognized by the chair before proceeding to speak. The discussion of an agenda item should focus on the item and the policy in question, not the personalities of the members of the body.
Right.
The chair has the right to cut off discussion that is too personal, too loud, or too crude.
I mean, I think it's definitely important that we all show respect for each other as well as the constituents as well. You know, so we have better, like you said, decorum and, and better flow of communication between all of us.
What does, what does our next agenda look like as far as length? And how long do you think we would take to cover this in a well-thought-out manner between you and the council here? If we were to postpone it, what are we potentially looking at?
Well, there, there are two ways. My first suggestion was to watch the DVD of Rosenberg himself. It's, I don't know if any of you have seen it, it's really entertaining.
Let me ask you this, can you get that at home on your internet?
I don't know, I have the DVD with me. And it, it lasts for fifty minutes, so.
Maybe you could leave it here, a couple of people could watch it.
It's really good. If you had a live agenda, I thought it would be good to watch tonight. But, but, but I do think it would be better if Mr. Krummich was here.
Yeah, it may be to Mayor Alves and, and Councilmember Hagan's point, right. I think that, you know, if that was presented the next meeting, he'd buy that. I mean, versus adopting this, adopting that, just, I think just a similar presentation. This is what we're going to be going with, council members and public. All five of us here, you know, hopefully you've had a chance to read.
It could be the first thing on the item.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And the other alternative is I could do a PowerPoint. But honestly, I think the, the DVD is more entertaining.
It says like fifteen minutes?[1668.65]